Good afternoon and welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board. Today is Thursday, November 17th, 2022. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have any public hearings today, so we are going to begin with our discussion items. And our first item up is 1535 Old Country Road LLC with Matt Charters.
Okay, so this is 1535 Route 58. If the board remembers that we had a preliminary approval for a car wash that's on the corner of Pulaski, the Pulaski extension and Route 58. Just some history. The town board did grant a special permit for this application back in 2020 on June 2nd. The planning board issued a preliminary approval on April 1st, 2021, and then the town board did extend the special permit for the property on June 21st of 2022 from discussions with the applicant. They thought when they were extending their special permit that they were covered for the entire application, but their preliminary approval instance elapsed. So what we're looking at today is just to grant a six-month extension in order to process their final application subject to all the original conditions of the preliminary approval and the conditions of the special permit. I did note on page two of my staff report, there are some changes between the preliminary application and the final. They're substantially inconformist. The building's actually shrunk a little bit. They removed an awning overhang, but it's all stuff we can address through the final review. We'll need to go to ARB. This is really just to keep them current and keep the process moving.
Too many elevations. All that happens is this. Is there anything?
Yes, it should be. I have the, I did send you the new set, but I haven't. I can send this. So in the copy, the small copy, it should have the elevations. It shows a peak roof. And then the new, the new set, they do show a flat roof with two peak roofs in different colors. You know, I thought this should be something that we look at in the, during the final with ARB.
Yeah. Does ARB has a CD yet?
No, not the final.
Okay, you don't have to go down. That's fine.
Just to keep going forward for them.
Yeah, so yeah, no approval. This will just.
Okay.
All right, everybody here good?
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's move on to 48 Third Street Town Homes with Greg Bergman.
Do we want to do the hospital first? Out of order, it's up to you.
Oh, was that what? I was just going by with each other.
Whatever you want to do.
You did say that you wanted to do that. My apologies.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay, we're going to do PMBC Northwell Health Parking Lot with Matt Charters.
Okay, so the plug is in.
Sorry, Matt.
That's okay. Good job as the applicant's representative. I'll ask you to come up too. Just give everyone a brief idea of what's going on. At last week's ZBA meeting, PMBC did apply for a special permit to change from one non-conforming use, which was a school, to office use on the property. That was granted. In connection with that, they're looking to expand their parking lot on the site. It would be an increase of 44 spaces. I've just distributed the plans you guys today. There's not really too much involved in this asphalt parking lot to accommodate the use. I don't know if I can ask the streets to a little bit more.
There was an area on the. Oh, I'm sorry, Cranberry Judge, AUDD, 737 Monoc Avenue, Riverhead, New York. With me, Artie Crowe, who's the chief financial officer, chief operating officer.
Please don't make me the money guy.
At the hospital. And you guys know Doug Adams from Young &amp; Young. So this is, the hospital's going to be utilizing the old junior high school building, and we got a variance for that. And we're going to be submitting our application for a use permit. But in the meantime, the employees from their second street building are going to be moved into the junior high building, and they're going to need a parking area. So there is an area that's already been partially graded.
Where's the junior high area? What's, where is that?
It's a smaller building out of the two structures. It's a smaller building.
That's where the park is going to be.
Yes, if you could look on the side of the building, you'll see it's shaded.
Yes.
Where Ms. Powers is looking. So we're going to be providing 44 spaces there. There are handy, two handicapped spaces in the front of the building, and we'd like to get going with it.
Isn't there existing parking already there behind that building? In this open area?
Not behind it, no, not to the east of the.
Where it says meet existing pavement, isn't there, isn't there parking in that area?
Yeah, there, there's, there's a driveway there that goes to the front of the building.
Looks like a pretty open area to me.
Yes, yes, it's a parking, it's a parking area.
So there are lots of striping and all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay. But you need more.
Yeah, it's not going to accommodate the employees once the amount of employees will be coming down to work in that building.
Do you still have the parking to the, what would be the south of the building?
On the, on the other side of the school?
No, Joe's talking about directly in front of the building. I'm talking about.
You're talking about along the, the south quarter?
Where the bank was. I'm, uh, quarter came that whole strip.
Yeah. That's parking, but that, that's the hospital employees are using that. So it's, it's full every day, every day it's full.
I'm sorry that you were interrupted.
No, no, that's fine.
I apologize.
And another question. I noticed at the, the north end of the parking area, you have a, an existing leaching basin and then a pool or a pond area.
Was it proposed?
There's nothing there now. So how is it getting there? I don't see, I didn't see anything about it.
First of all, Doug Adams, Young &amp; Young, 400 Ostrander Avenue, Riverhead, 1091.
Is, is, is the lot going to be sloped so that all the water goes down to the north?
The, the plan shows, uh, shows grades on here. It's about a one and a half percent pitch on the parking lot down to a catch basin in the northwest, northeast corner.
Right.
Piped out to a bubble basin and an area graded with a slight depression of about a foot and a half in depth, connected to the existing leaching pool. You'll see it's close to the fence there that exists now that, you know, handles the water, doesn't handle the water. And then that basically finds its way out.
And it all flows to the other one?
Yeah, after a certain event.
Joe, the, it was referred to the town engineer's office. He reviewed it and found it acceptable.
Joe, we did do a site inspection with Artie and with Doug, and nothing higher than that. That bowl corner between Ostrander to the west is a little lying area, so there's plenty of capacity in that area for any stormwater runoff.
Yeah, I mean, what I guess I'm getting at is why I mentioned the existing lot to the south there. So you just said there's parking, but there's drainage there already, correct?
Yes.
That couldn't, you couldn't use it?
It's a, it's a lower elevation at the north end.
Everything drains to the north.
Yes. Pitch is that way. And you're going to have a retaining wall?
There's already one there.
Oh, is that, no, he says proposed.
Yeah. It, it's, some of the workers already done.
Oh, I didn't know that.
An overzealous contractor.
They all say.
Is it, is it, is it built already?
Uh, not the parking lot itself, Joe.
But the whole wall is.
The wall is there, it's graded, it's just.
And curb, this concrete curb is up already, so?
Proposed, that's not there.
Not there, oh, no. Didn't get this done, huh?
They weren't that fast.
I'm wondering how come some kind of buffer besides the retaining wall has not been put into this plan? There is a home directly across the street from, from this, and I'm sure that they didn't think that they were going to be looking at a parking lot from their front door. So is there something that you can do?
Along, inside the fence, along the.
Between the curb and the fence line?
Eastern property line.
Yeah. I don't see any reason why we can't do something.
I mean, even without hours of operation, you know, headlights and, you know, in the evening.
Totally, totally agreeable to that, and understandable. So we'll, we'll put shrubs or. Or provide something in there that'll shield it from that and keep it separated. It's not possible we happen to do that.
Yeah, I'll write it as, I'll add it as a condition. Evergreen shrubs, two feet of install or whatever the town code requires. I'll make suggestions of species. They can do ink, ink berry or something like that.
To put them in there when the weather gets nicer, right?
They can go now, actually, they'll be fine. As long as you, as long as the ground's still soft.
And that would be on the east side of the retaining wall?
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
Between the parking lot and the fence.
Yep.
Retaining wall's on the west side.
Yeah, the retaining wall.
Right, so I'm saying that, that the shrubs would be on the east side so that the.
Correct, correct.
And even the people driving down Ostrander.
You won't see it, yeah.
We have to consider the residents over in that area off of Middle Road.
Yeah, I think that's fair. It's a residential zone, so we want to keep it as nice looking as we can. No issues with that. Anybody else have any questions? Joe, a resolution prepared just so when we do vote on it, it will be out in the numbers.
And that's not on here for today, correct?
Yes.
It is on for today?
Yes.
So when we get to it, can you, when you get, when we get to it, can you read?
When the building is ready to be moved into.
Yeah.
And the parking area is done.
Well, he added the spec that truly on it, so I think you got to change it there.
Yeah, well, we'll have to, we're going to have to reference the, the evergreens on here because we want the, we'll want the buffer shown on the.
So you don't want these in? Because the only thing is what Drew said.
Yeah.
Use the other ones and just.
No, we're going to have, it's going to have to be amended to incorporate the plantings. We'll have that on the plan.
Very good. All right, everybody got up here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, we appreciate it. All right, now we will move on to, where'd they go? 48 Third Street Town Homes with Greg.
All right, so this is a discussion of a final site plan application. The planning board's been reviewing an application to construct a four-unit townhouse development with a footprint of 2,040 square feet, a total living, total floor area of 4,116 square feet along with related site improvements. The board granted preliminary approval for this application on April 21st of this year. It was subject to a few conditions relating to landmarks preservation, ARB, water district, and the payment of the remaining final site plan fee. The revised plans were reviewed and approved by the ARB at its meeting on October 28th of this year. Revised plans were reviewed and approved by the LPC at its regular meeting on October 24th of this year. The plans did show the necessary revisions from the Riverhead Water District's consulting engineer, and they did pay the remainder of the site plan fee. So they've satisfied all the conditions preliminary. So we do have a final approval resolution on. There's a couple of conditions in there, you know, kind of typical conditions prior to the issuance of building permits. They've got to file covenants. One of the important pieces is that they file, that they are required to obtain rental permits before the units can be occupied. Beyond that, pretty straightforward approval resolution.
Okay.
Well, that came out.
Yeah. Only thing I would like to say is that Martin Sendlewski, architect. S E N D L E W S K I. Yeah, working with Greg in the planning department and ARB and historic on this, everything worked the way it's supposed to. It really went well, and it resulted in a very good project. You know, their input and our working together made the project 10 times better than what we finished on when we started.
That's great to hear.
It will be a nice improvement. I mean, when I first went to that site, it was a blighted, boarded up house. You know, I went out, there were like beer cans and all sorts of paraphernalia around, so it'll be nice to clean it up and get some resins.
I went and looked at it.
All the beer cans came from Ray.
I just said he didn't call me for one.
Have a great day, guys. All right, let's do the proposed drive-in restaurant and retail site again with Greg.
All right, Kim was the attorney on this as well. So this is a discussion of a final site plan application. The board's been reviewing this for a number of years now. It's for a proposed drive-in restaurant and a retail building. The property is on the north side of Old Country Road. It does have frontage on 58 as well as Osborne Avenue. The project did require a special permit from the town board, which they received in January of this year.
Why did they need that?
For the drive-in restaurant use. So a drive-in restaurant is different from a drive-through restaurant. Drive-in restaurant has like curbside service.
Yeah.
When this application initially came in, it was actually submitted first before I came here, I think it was in 2015. They were trying to get Sonic into the site. As I understand, right now Sonic is not involved in negotiations. What they're trying to do is they're trying to get the approval, potentially get Sonic back in the loop. That being said, you know, the, the planning board doesn't approve a tenancy for a site, so if there was another restaurant that wanted to kind of execute a drive-in type style restaurant, they could do so at the site. So the board did grant preliminary approval for this application back in December of 2021. There were a number of conditions relating to the Riverhead Sewer District, Riverhead Water District, the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan and the remaining site plan fee. So they did consult with the Riverhead Sewer District. There was initially questions of how the sewer main was going to be operated. They've addressed those, and they did consult with the sewer district. They got a letter of sewer availability based on the plans. They were, that, that letter was dated June 14th of this year. The applicant did consult with the Riverhead Water District, and they received a letter of water bill, a letter of water availability subject to the conditions of that map and plan. They received approval from their Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan on October 22nd of this year, and they paid the remaining site plan fee. So just, there are a couple of conditions in here. So this is approving the site plan. They do not have any kind of tenant or elevations yet for the 5,000 square foot retail building. There is a condition in there that prior to any permits for the retail building, they will need to come back to the planning board to provide elevations. Will need to be.
Are there going to be two separate water connections and two separate sewer connections? One for the restaurant and one for the building?
I believe it is going to be one connection feeding both. The sewer connection. So it's a, it's a common sewer connection. Both of the buildings feed into one main, and then it goes south because the, they're actually going to have to bore under 58 to connect to that sewer main on the south side. So it will be a common main fed.
About water?
Water is, I believe, a common service being fed, I believe, from Osborne.
So the retail building is, is, yeah, you, water use is going to be paid by the.
The water, I apologize, there are two separate water services. So there's a separate water for the retail, separate water for the restaurant. Anyway, all that stuff was detailed in the consulting engine H2M that provided that letter of water availability. So that stuff will be all addressed.
So Greg, just for the record, the final plans do include the berm and the approved plans going to be included?
Yes, there is, uh, they do have a pretty substantial landscaping plan. There is a, it's about a two to two and a half foot berm along the frontage with 58, and it will be planted on top of that. So it'll serve some nice screening. They do have the street trees that are required by code. They didn't need any, they're actually under the impervious surface, so there's a pretty decent amount of, decent amount of pervious coverage on the site, and it'll be attractive landscape.
I just want to let, let you know for the record that when this resolution comes up, I'll be voting against it. I think this, with the extra building in addition to the restaurant, I think that's an over intensification of the, of use, even though I'm sure it's allowed by code, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think it's going to really cause traffic problems. I'd rather see them not have that in there, and then let's see what happens with the restaurant comes in to see what the traffic's going to be like because I think it's really going to be bad. I just want to get that on the line.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you. Let's move on to 817 Pulaski Street Self-Storage Warehouse with Greg again.
All right, so again, so this is another application the board's been reviewing for some time. This is an application proposing a two-story self-storage warehouse with a footprint of 20,000 square feet and a total area of 40,000 square feet, and as well as perform lighting, paving, landscaping, and storm water management improvements. This is on the Law Ireland Brewery site. There's a pretty large area to the south of the brewery building between the train tracks, which they are proposing the building in. They're going to be taking access to the self-storage warehouse site from Marcy Avenue. There will be sufficient circulation throughout the site. The board granted preliminary approval for this application. I believe it was in December of 2021. Again, that was subject to a number of conditions. They had to satisfy fire marshal comments, town engineer, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, and again, the remainder of the site plan fee. They received their Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan approval on September 19th. The satisfaction of that SWIP addressed the town engineer's concerns and comments from his memo. I did meet with the applicant and the fire marshal. The fire marshal's comments were substantially addressed. There are just some minor changes that will be made to the plan, and I did write them in the final approval resolution. Again, I did meet with the applicant and gave them a marked up copy so that the changes are clear. So we have a resolution for final approval of this application.
Are there two levels?
There will, yes, it will be, yes, two stories.
Two stories, huh?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions on this one. Okay. All right, thank you, Greg. Okay, we are now going to take public comments on the resolutions. If anybody would like to come up and comment on any of the resolutions that we have today, now's the time to come.
Hi, Kim, but just to comment on the Osborne Avenue that's on for today, our final resolution. I think I'd like to table that going to, if we have a full board, I'd request the, the board to, the other day, I hope this will be arrows here.
I think that's necessary. Could we straw poll it now?
Oh, I mean, we have a quorum, so I don't see why.
I don't know, but I don't know if I have three votes. That's probably what is in here.
Well, resolution's on for today.
You want to sit table it?
Chairman, we can take a straw poll, see if it has support. Mr. Shore, what deck are you supporting the restaurant 58?
Yes.
Okay, then I withdraw my request then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else with any public comment on the resolution? Seeing that there is no one, let's start with the resolutions.
I'll move resolution number 107, which is six-month extension for the site plan application at 1535 58.
Second motion?
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Nenaro? Oh, sorry. Dasaske? Woski, yes.
I'll move resolution number 108 for 48 Third Street. Final site plan approval, so moved.
Thank you.
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske? Woski, yes.
109, I'll move. Grant's final site plan approval for the site plan application of 817 Pulaski Street Realty LLC.
Second motion?
Vote, please. Bear?
No.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske?
Aye.
Woski, yes.
I'll move resolution number 110 for proposed drive-in restaurant and retail site, granting final site plan approval, so moved.
Second.
By number 109.
You just voted on 109.
You just voted on 109.
You voted no.
That was the Pulaski Street.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that?
110.
What, what one are we on now?
110.
Second.
Vote, please.
Yes.
Bear?
Um, yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske?
Okay, I.
Joe, you just voted yes when you said you want to vote no. You know what we're on?
No.
110.
It's on 110, it's on 4, I think, agenda is the rest.
Did we do 109?
Yes.
109 is our houses.
That's why I got confused. And if it's possible, I'd change my vote on 109.
Recall, recall the vote?
Yeah, recall the 109.
Okay, let's recall the vote on 109. Can I get a first and second?
I'll give you first, I'll, I'll move it.
Second.
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske? Woski, yes.
My apologies.
Okay. Now we're on 110. Okay.
And that's been moved and seconded.
All right, so vote, please.
No.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske?
I'd just like to say I agree with Joe Bear 110%. It's too much on that site. That extra retail building really doesn't belong there, but it does meet the zoning, it does meet the criteria, so I'm going to vote yes.
Woski, yes. Yes.
Yeah. Can we get the, the additions?
Yes, Matt's up there.
So it'll be an additional condition. So say site plan shall be revised to an inkberry holly or ready or similar evergreen shrub.
Where's that going to go?
Uh, we can add it, I would think either as a new number two or, probably as a new number two. And then we'll just bump everything else down.
All right.
For conditions, inkberry holly or similar evergreen shrub to be a minimum of two feet in height, installed two foot on center prior to the issuance of a CC, certificate of compliance.
I'll move resolution 111.
Second motion?
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day? Dasaske?
Aye.
Woski, yes. Okay, thank you, Matt. Do we have any public comments on all matters? Would anybody like to come up? No? Okay.
I assume we have a executive session? Would you like to go in direct?
Yes, yes.
I'll move you move into executive session?
Uh, do we comment on the subject?
This is legal advice.
Legal advice, okay.
Okay.
Second motion?
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Dasaske?
Aye.
Woski, yes. Okay, just have. Okay, just have...